Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:04, so I call this meeting to order. At this time, we will have a moment of silence. Let us stand, say the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call for the board?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bryant?
Present.
Ms. Bryson-Moore-SPurger?
Here.
Ms. Dooley? Ms. McKeever? Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And our student rep, Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, we will now have comments from the community. I will first start with people that are currently in the room. And I think the first person that has signed up to speak is Mr. Chuck Moran.
Good afternoon, Dr. Gurley, Chairman Bryant, and members of the school board. My comments tonight are going to be blessedly short. I have asked privately and in this forum since January that the documents written by Phil Barner, which include negative and unsubstantiated claims about my great aunt, Sirupta Moran, who was one of the namesakes for Burnley Moran Elementary, be disconnected from the school's website. As the decision has been made now to change the names of the schools anyway, these documents are now entirely irrelevant. They're really doing no good. So I feel that they are hurtful to our family and serve no purpose except to continue this disparagement of our once revered educators in our community. I therefore request that the board authorize the removal of these documents as soon as possible. I also respectfully suggest that the board take advantage of a really golden opportunity that's right here in front of us. The national movement to change the names of facilities, including schools, flowed in large part from Charlottesville, following the blow to the community that we all sustained in 2017 during the Alt-right rally. I suggest that the board maintain the current school naming pause to give you all time to work with your strategic planners and anyone else who might be willing to help, including myself, to fix any open issues in the process and develop a comprehensive set of standards that are factual, inclusive of a much, excuse me, a much larger cross-section of the community, and entirely transparent. What better city to get this process right, to lead and help heal by creating a package of best practices for renaming schools that may be shared with other communities across the country than Charlottesville? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moran, for your comments. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Ms. Como, do we have anyone on Zoom? Thank you. And there will be another moment in the agenda that you'll have a chance to speak if you'd like at this time. Next item on the agenda is student and staff recognitions. So we'd first start with Mr. Aaron Icoost.
Good evening, Sir Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Gurley. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to present an award to one of our young CCS artists. Each year, we submit three works of art to the Virginia School Boards Association Art Contest. And this year, we selected Pine and River Landscape, which is a watercolor by Vincent Beeling to represent us in the elementary category. Vincent's painting received second place by a panel of judges during the March 1, the SBA Central Region Meeting. Vincent is a fifth grader, soon to be sixth grader, at Walker Upper Elementary School, and he's here tonight with some of his family members. I invite Vincent to come up here to the podium to be recognized for his achievement and to receive his award. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Take the picture.
Next on the agenda is Dr. Odie, Virginia School, Virginia Nurses Week and National Nurses Day.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Gurley, good evening. So this evening, I want to take a moment to recognize our amazing nurses. National Nurses Week begins each year on May 6 and ends on May 12. Governor Youngkin has signed a certificate of recognition for School Nurse Appreciation Day, which is May 10 of this year. While I won't read that long proclamation word for word, I think we all know the value of our nurses in our schools. The care they provide to our students is so very needed and appreciated. Our school nurses make incredible contributions each and every day. Here on this slide, we see all of our school nurses' names. Heather Altimus, Dana Farrar, Stacy Oliver, Emily Brady, Sherry Eiker, Amy Charon, Jody Esselston, Gemma Furman, Marissa D., Nurse D. Bell, and Bonnie Vineyard. And of course, you see our lead nurse, Dana Farrar, there with some of her very important tools that she uses to care for all of our students. Thank you to all of our nurses. Your compassion, optimism, and kindness do not go unnoticed. We appreciate you. Let's give our nurses a round of applause. And I'll continue, if I may, Mr. Chairman, about Teacher Appreciation Week. As the month of May is full of celebration, with Mother's Day coming soon and commencement exercises, and of course, recognition of our nurses, as we just did, we absolutely must take time to recognize and honor our amazing teachers here in Charlottesville City Schools for Teacher Appreciation Week. Teacher Appreciation Week has been recognized during the first full week of May. Governor Youngkin has shared a proclamation to recognize all of the outstanding, caring, nurturing, engaging teachers in Virginia during the week of May 8 through 12. Of course, I think we all know that we could recognize our teachers every week of the school year. Now, I won't read that full proclamation, but I want to point out just a few key pieces. In that proclamation, it mentions that teachers are trusted, respected professionals. They provide high-quality, innovative learning experiences. They work together with parents to do what is right for each child. And they help students reach their full potential. These are just a few of the things that our teachers do each and every day, but we know that they do so much more working with our students and families and communities. Please be sure to thank a teacher, or two, or 10, for all that they do for all of our students each and every day. We appreciate them so very much. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Now, as we have done for the past two years partnering with the Kindness Cafe, our schools will have gift certificates to hand out next week to all of our staff so that they can go to the Kindness Cafe to choose their choice of a treat or a beverage. So again, happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all of our amazing teachers. Let's give them a round of applause. And we have an additional, before I go on to the Golden Apple Award, we have an additional recognition for School Lunch Hero Day that we've, we realized that School Lunch Hero Day is tomorrow, May 5. And so we have amazing people in our cafeterias, in our schools, that are providing delicious nutritious meals and snacks for our students so that they can feed their brain, so they can focus on their learning each and every day. And we want to take an opportunity to thank those amazing people. When you go visit the schools, please don't forget to stop at the cafeteria to thank our cafeteria workers for all that they do each and every day. Thank you, school nutrition workers. Happy School Lunch Hero Day. Let's give them a round of applause. And one more recognition tonight. We have our Golden Apple Award winners. Speaking of teachers, we just talked about it being Teacher Appreciation Week next week. But last evening, just last evening, over in the pack, we were able to celebrate our Golden Apple Award winners with Mr. and Mrs. Richard Nunley, who sponsor the award. Our outstanding Golden Apple Award winners were selected by their peers and administrators for their commitment to doing what is best and what is right for students. We appreciate their passion, their energy, their joy of teaching and learning every day. The Golden Apple winners for 2023 are shown here before you. Mason, from left to right, top row to the bottom row. Mason Goldman, Charlie Nelson, Erica Trent, Carol Bushing, Gabriella Moore, Melvin Grady, Teresa Sito, Megan Tim, Gillian Smith, and Susan Harris. Let's give them a round of applause. Congratulations to all of our Golden Apple Award winners. Thank you so much for the important work that you do each day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Odie, and congratulations. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. So next on the agenda is an action item. So welcome back, Dr. Odie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Dr. Gurley, good evening again. Last month, I presented the Special Education Annual Plan for your review. At this time, the superintendent recommends that the board take action to approve that plan.
I'll move that we approve the 2023-2024 Special Education Annual Plan as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, Dr. Odie?
I'll continue on. Last month, I also presented the 2024-2025 draft school calendar for your review. As a reminder, the key points there, the school year starts on August 14, a week earlier than where we have traditionally started, and it ends on May 30. We are continuing with three days off at Thanksgiving. We're ending the second nine weeks, the Friday before winter break, for a clear break to the semester. We are maintaining our full two weeks at winter break and have Monday, January 6, as a teacher, as a teacher workday to work on those report cards. There are four professional learning days, and the calendar has 178 days with an approximate 1,026 instructional hours. At this time, the superintendent recommends that the board take action to approve the 2024-2025 school calendar.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the 2024-2025 calendar.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir, I have a question. Just was curious, I mean, this kind of puts us in a cycle of approving this that far out. And if there's any need to make some changes to this, assuming we can always bring it back, but it just...
Absolutely.
I mean, I know that the request was to give people enough time to really understand the whys behind all of this. But we do feel like we need to take action on this as well, this, this far out. That's, I guess that's a question.
The request from the stakeholders was to give them plenty of time to make a decision such as an earlier start like this. So that's what we did. We had over, almost 500 participants. I know that we've, we've had to come back for a calendar revision here or there. I have one for tonight. And so I know that if there is something we need to come back for, I'm happy to bring it back to discuss.
Thank you. I just appreciate the work that you guys did.
Thank you so much.
Based on the responses. All right, thank you.
So are we ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Next, Dr. Odie, the calendar revision, 23-24.
All right. In January, you all approved our 23-24 school calendar. Since then, we have learned that March 5 of 2024 will be a presidential primary. So we are revising the calendar to have that day be a teacher workday so that our buildings are available for voting. The superintendent recommends that the board take action to approve this revised 23-24 calendar at this time.
So is there a motion?
I move that we approve the 2023-2024 calendar revisions.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
I just quickly wanted to make a statement to everybody that I hope everybody is aware that you should be receiving mailings from...
Voter registration.
Voter registration for, for new precincts, new voting locations, as they had to readjust those, and they do that, I believe, every 10 years. So I know that I just received mine, and I'll be voting here at Charlottesville High School. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody keeps that on their radar and watch out for that and/or check and make sure you know where you're going.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Torres. So are we ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Dr. Odie.
Thank you.
All right, we now have our items for discussion. We will have Dr. Odie and guests for our Buford Lab School update.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gurley. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Gurley. I do come to you with excitement tonight to share information about the Buford Lab School. We have guests, as Dr. Gurley said, from UVA, but I want to give you a little intro, and then I'm going to turn it over to them. Earlier this year, our UVA partners reached out to us about a possible lab school at Buford. After several meetings and conversations between the UVA staff and the awesome principal at Buford, Mr. Jordan, Dr. Ben Allen from the Equity Center, Dr. Tanya Coffey, our science and innovation coordinator, Dr. Gurley, and myself, we became really excited about this partnership, this lab school opportunity, which is a sort of a school within a school where our middle school science classes would incorporate computer science activities and projects into their lessons. This lab school would help our Buford students develop technical skills for future workforce success by solving real-world and community-based problems with computational tools. We partnered with UVA, and they submitted an application for a planning grant, and it was approved. We've now even selected our community partner liaison, Dr. Jill Dahl, who will head this important and exciting work. So now I'll turn it over to Dr. Stephanie Rowley, the dean of the School of Education at UVA, and her team to talk a little bit more about the Buford Lab School. Dr. Rowley?
Good evening, everyone. Well, thank you for that warm welcome. I am super excited to be here. So I'm a new dean, so I just got here in July. And I have to say that Dr. Gurley and Dr. Oden have been really wonderful in welcoming me to the community and helping me to understand what we can do at UVA and the School of Education and Human Development to support our community partners and how we can do the good work for the students who we all care about. I have with me Kim Wilkins, who is one of our students technically, but she's also really an amazing professional and kind of one of our community scholars, partners in that she's done a lot of great work in this area of computation, computing skills, and youth development. So I think Dr. Oden hit most of our... Okay, okay, sure. Hit most of our high points here. So just wanted to fill in a few details, but really I'm here to see if anybody has any questions. So some of you are likely to be aware of the VDOE focus on these laboratory schools, which are really built on what I would think of as sort of a charter school model. For our project, we really wanted to work directly with an existing school in partnership so that we weren't sort of dividing precious resources and really leveraging the strengths in both the UVA community and in Charlottesville City Schools. The larger initiative around these laboratory schools is really to spur innovation and instruction and structure and pedagogy in any way we think would be beneficial. And then also to foster these relationships between universities or other institutions of higher ed. So we have some community colleges who are involved and our post-secondary and our K-12 partners. And these should be something like demonstration projects where we are trying out new things that can then feed back into the public school systems. So this is just a quick map here of the planning grants. So the $100 million from the VDOE is going in part to a series of planning grants. There are about 20 planning grants that were given out. You can see they're in every region of the state. Those with the check marks, the orange circles with check marks, were approved planning grants. Those with the circles are still under review. The blue, the two blue are the two lab schools that were already established. And so even at this early date, two schools have already been established. You can see under Charlottesville, there are two. And that is another partnership with PVCC. Though PVCC is also a partner in our grant. And so really, the theme is we want to leverage all the resources in the community and bring everyone together as much as possible. So key personnel, and you can go all the way through to the end. So you started out with conversations with me, Dr. Gurley, Dr. Oden, early on saying, what can we do to support the already wonderful work that's happening in Charlottesville City Schools? We agreed that the middle school would be a great locus of our work in part because we at UVA in the School of Ed have deep expertise in supporting middle schools from a research perspective, but also in terms of practice. We then brought on Mr. Jordan and then some of our really amazing faculty from the, from UVA. And Dr. Oden mentioned Dr. Ben Allen, who is the Director of the Equity Center and who is running the Star Hill Pathways Program. So we're also going to interface there. We thought Buford in particular, because we already have some great partnerships going on with Buford and a lot of focus on science in particular. So you can do, there are three little circles that will come up. So our focus, again, is computer science. So many of you know that there are standards of learning in the state for computer science, which virtually no schools are meeting because it's new and it's really challenging. And so we thought we would start with a tough issue and something that is newer and something, again, that leans on our expertise in the School of Ed, thinking we want to bring more children into the fold in terms of computer science. So oftentimes, you have to be really excited about computers or really excited about math in order to get into computation. We want to make sure that this is accessible to all students. And part of what we're hoping to do is really get students engaged by having them work on problems from their communities. So we haven't decided what those problems will be. We're going to ask the children and our community partners to help to identify problems from the community for them to work on in a problem-based learning, a project-based learning format in science classes. And there are three overall goals here. One is to develop this community of practice. So to bring our teacher education students, our pre-service teachers, along with in-service teachers, along with our faculty, along with our community partners, all together to support one another in developing professional development and other sorts of supports for this computational-based learning. Second, engaging students, like I said, making it personally meaningful. So we might have the students ask questions like, what's the connection between zip code and environmental pollution, air pollution, or something like that? We would help them to find data that will help them to answer those questions and then fold that into the curriculum and across the curriculum. So hopefully, it will be more personally meaningful. And then making these meaningful community connections. You'll see in a moment who our community partners are, but really bringing on mentors and others who will support students and getting excited about computer science. So I'm not going to go into all the goals here. This is a part where you can ask questions if you have them. But the goal is really to transform teaching and learning through this project-based learning format and including things like mentoring and collaboration, integrating computer science and data science, and then really moving towards this K-8 computer science endorsement. The main partners, again, the city schools, us, and the Equity Center. We're going to lean heavily on the Equity Center for some summer support for students who can participate in the Star Hill Pathways Program. UC our computer, our community partners there. A number of programs that are already doing great work on computer science and supporting our children. And then a variety of UVA partners, some of whom are already working at Buford, and, but who all have this focus on middle school and developing new computer science curricula. So we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Rowley. I'll start with Ms. McKee, if she have any questions.
Hi, thank you so much for coming. I'm so excited to have you here, both of you. It is an interesting and exciting time. Now, I guess there, like, as a practical matter, you know, we always think the SOL test in science, well, every SOL test, as you know, is like chock-full of information. And basically, we don't have enough time in our science classes to do all of the curriculum work we need to do. So how does this fit into the science classes? I don't know if that's a UVA question or...
Is that a UVA question?
But we can answer that later. I mean, it's fine. Like, I just think it's a...
It's a neat question.
I can tell you from our Monday, we have a, is that every other Monday we meet? We're finding the natural intersection. So as we're developing, as we're developing those problems of practice, we are trying to find those natural intersections. The great thing about, so it's with all four of the, so there are four science teachers. So the great thing about eighth grade sciences, it's a culmination of all of the, all of the sciences. And then seventh grade is life, seventh grade is life science. So there is this natural place where these four, I think we landed on four, four problems where these, where they will meet. But that's our plan. That's how we plan to integrate it into the current. So it won't be like they have to stop and do something. It will complement the curriculum organically.
Ditto. It should overlap. We don't want it to be another thing for our teachers. We want it to be able to fall right into place. And so that's what this planning year is going to be about. We're going to be doing some professional learning with the teachers over the summer so that they can see how it can be a seamless, like Dr. Gurley said, intersection.
And do we have the, what I want to say, the tools for the kids? Like, do they need computers? Do they need, like, I know we have Chromebooks, but I know computer science isn't really that good on Chromebooks, so...
So all of that will come through the, so in the planning year, we will, so we will work on, so Dr. Dahl and team will work on what resources are available because all of those things will get folded into our planning grant. So all of those things will get identified through this process. So there's a, there are a wealth of resources attached to this, which we're really excited about, which don't require us or require you as a school board to say, we have to allocate the funds so that all that will get worked through the grant.
And this is not, this is like presumably more than scratch, more than the kind of basic level computer programming that is happening like our kids are normally doing, like, they already know how to do it, basically.
Yeah, so absolutely. So and there's both support for the teachers and for the children. So the children can also participate in the summer program. And so we're hoping that the sort of combination will, will make room for some of these additional activities. And as Dr. Gurley was saying, there, this is the planning grant year. There will be a full-on lab school grant. And the expectation of the governors that some of these lab schools will actually be new brick-and-mortar schools. And so you can imagine that there are resources for us not building a brick-and-mortar school. Then there are resources for things like the computer resources for the students and for teachers and, and for others.
And finally, like, I think that's, like, how are we working with the high school to like make sure we have like a really seamless path to our high school programs? So, you know, because honestly, I feel like the AP is a little bit... I feel like the APCS offerings are limited and could be much stronger. So I just wonder if there's any plan for that.
That's where Dr. Coffey comes in. We've certainly included her in this conversation because we want a clear pathway for our students as they learn these skills so that they can have a path to go through high school, take coursework, and then go into careers that involve computer science. We still have work to do. Again, this is the planning year.
This is the beginning, yes.
That's, that's our goal right there, to make sure that there are careers that these students go into, and it starts right there in our Buford Lab School.
Great, thank you so much. And again, thank you for your efforts and energy into this.
Ms. Torres?
Mr. Morris?
Just excited, excited and ready, so thank you.
Ms. Morrison-Burro?
I just wanted to add that we're so glad that you're here and working in this partnership. One of the things that's crazy about Charlottesville is that there is a wealth of resources here, but the devil's in the details with connecting the right people. And so you all have a beautiful plan here, and I love that the funds are going into Buford. And I just, it's a lovely model, and so I'm happy you're here and looking forward to see what you all do in the future.
Well, thank you. I am thrilled to be here and literally thrilled to be here. And whatever we can do to partner with you all, we're here for whatever we can do. And I love the fact that we are pulling all the people together and around the table. So our meetings are broad and inclusive. And so hopefully, we can bring all these resources to bear to support the kids at Buford.
Okay, Ms. Torres?
Yeah, I think just similarly, I was just really excited to hear that these funds are being pushed into the schools. So I want to just express my gratitude to those who, who saw and valued that, you know, through UVA and just our partnership with that. It's so important to, to not be pulling funds away from public schools. So this is really exciting, and I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Rowley. I am, oh, you have, go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Rowley brought to our attention last night at the Golden Apple Ceremony that she learned that we are finalists for the annual CBIC, which stands for Charlottesville, you all probably know Charlottesville Business Innovation Council Awards. And it's the partnership award. So it goes to the new collaborative partnerships that have been built within the last 18 months, creating successful outcomes for the partnership itself, area education, nonprofits, and/or community at large. And so there are four finalists here in the, here they are, Charlottesville Computer Science Community, the Community Climate Collaborative, the Buford Lab School, and the UVA Engineering Link Lab. So we're excited to be in that number as a finalist. So congratulations to us. So thank you so much to UVA.
Dr. Rowley, I mispronounced your name several times. I do apologize. I mispronounced your name several times, so I do apologize. And we are excited about the great partnership. And Dr. Dahl, I'm sure she's excited as well. Thank you.
Next, next up, we have Kim Powell with our Middle School Modernization Update.
Good evening, Chairman Bryant, members of the board, and Dr. Gurley. We're very excited to provide you with another update this evening. And the update this evening for the middle school project focuses on the plan for PE, the plan for athletics, and then we'll wrap up talking about communications. And so I'm very happy to have Mr. Rodney Jordan, our principal here, to speak about the PE plans and the athletics plans as well, so. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, and Dr. Gurley. As Ms. Powell stated... Sorry. We are going to talk about PE and what that will look like at Buford next year as well as our athletic programs. So I'll start with PE. Next year, our PE classes will be held at the Boys and Girls Club during the school day. We do offer early morning PE. That will also be at the Boys and Girls Club. And then after-school PE classes will be held at Johnson Elementary School. And the times for that are, early morning will be 7:30 to 8:15, and then those students will just walk up. And then after school, we will begin PE at Johnson at 3:45. Our students are responsible for getting there, whether their parents take them or they walk. And those classes will start at 3:45, so that gives them about 30 minutes to get from Buford to Johnson, and those classes will go until 4:30. And hopefully, we still have our after-school bus next year to take kids home who need transportation. We are also temporarily going to assign a space within our building for our PE teachers. And we will store some of our PE equipment in their new office space. And then we also have pods that have been ordered by the division. And so next, we have, I believe it's football. So we have a couple of different options that we are working through. I will tell you that if we have bus drivers, it will make, for our after-school programs, that will make life a lot easier. So we are hoping for that. The first option, which is the one that we prefer the most, is for our practices to be held right here at the high school, at the field above and adjacent to the baseball field. If that does not happen, then we've already talked to Ms. Thompson, and she said that we could use Johnson for football practice. So what we would like to do, again, if we have the bus, we'll have our students get dressed at Buford before getting on the bus to head over to the high school. And we also will use this time for snacks, making sure that they eat and they're ready to go for practice, as well as have a study hall. And then we're looking at allowing our athletes to use the 6:30 activity bus here at the high school Mondays through Thursdays. allowing our athletes to use the 6:30 activity bus here at the high school Mondays through Thursdays. And then Fridays, our middle school practice, practice will, we won't have practice on Fridays. And then, just like this year and in years past, all of our home football games will be played, will be played here at the high school. Next, we have volleyball. We are waiting to hear back from some folks. We are, our first option is either Carver Rec or Key Rec Center, if they're available, or use the auxiliary gym here. The reason for that is they are already set up for, you know, the volleyball nets. We were considering Walker, but right now, Walker isn't set up for us to have volleyball there. So these are the options that we are looking at and having our home games here when the high school volleyball team is away. Basketball, we will be using the gym at Walker. The boys' and girls' teams will practice there in the wintertime on alternate days. So it may look like girls' basketball Monday, Wednesday, boys' basketball Tuesday, Thursday. We are, again, hoping for a bus. And I will say, right now, we have an athletic bus that drops off our students from Walker at the Boys and Girls Club, and then just pulls up to Beaufort and transports our kids where they need to go. So hopefully, that's still in place next year. And then we will use the bathrooms and locker rooms at Walker for student dress rooms. And then all of our home basketball games will take place at, at Walker. For track, practices will happen here three days a week. Right now, we're not sure which days that'll be, but we are planning to have track here three days a week. And again, you'll see the bus there. We'll use the bathrooms and dressing rooms in the CHS Track Field House. And then meets will happen at away locations. And we have not hosted a middle school event, at least not while I've been here. And for the other sports that we have at Beaufort, they will pretty much continue as they, as they have. So our cheer team can use a classroom space. Swim is at Smith Aquatic Center. And then our baseball team practices at Lane, and our softball team practices at McIntyre. And all of our equipment will be stored here and handled here under the supervision of Andy Jones.
We can pause for questions here if you'd like, or we can, there's only a couple more slides. Okay. Yes, thank you, Mr. Jordan, and thanks to Andy Jones. He's put a lot of work into that athletics planning. He couldn't be here this evening. He's living the dream of an athletic director in the spring season, which is extremely hectic. He needs a clone right now. So the contract is moving through the process in City Hall to be ratified. That was as of April 27th, when I needed to submit this presentation, but everything seems to be on track there. So wanted to give that update and also share that contractor mobilization is slated to begin Monday, June the 12th, which is, that's when the contractor starts coming in, putting up orange construction fence. You start to see equipment coming on ground, so very exciting. And regarding communications, this project was the top story in the April superintendent's newsletter, including that great chart that VMDO put together with, that shows families how their students are impacted as this project comes online and moves through the process to completion. We are doing outreach through PTOs. That process had begun a little while back, but of course, we're continuing it. And I know I'm going to be at the PTO meeting the 10th next week, I guess, so. And Mr. Jordan did some informational work at the open house that they had recently for Walker students. So those, that work continues. There is this large banner that was used for the Dogwood Parade. And I believe it's also the same one that's now being used at the, within Beaufort, just to keep the project top of mind with our students. There's going to be continuing press release and media outreach work. And again, details and timelines communicated specifically to current and future Walker and Beaufort families. That's work that's going to have to continue through this process. Social media updates, and last but never least, a dedicated webpage for the latest information. So those links can be found in this presentation, and I believe that is the last slide. So, Mr. Jordan, I'd be happy to take questions.
And there's one other thing that Ms. Powell didn't mention, that, Ms. Thacker, I just had a single moment. Ms. Thacker and Ms. Chuck will be working with Wickknock to formalize a groundbreaking ceremony. We're going to try to shoot for before we get out of school, but we will definitely have a groundbreaking ceremony. They, they're working on that right now. More details to come.
Thank you, Dr. Gurley. I'm sorry we didn't add that to the slide because you had told me that. Thank you, so.
So any questions for Kim?
No, I sent, I guess, a question just about the A buses and, you know, if those would be utilized as we got those.
The challenges with the small buses is, and this is why this has come up, because there is activity support currently. But when you talk about the whole football team in particular needing to come over here, it's going to take additional driver capacity, and the, the 14 passengers won't help with that. We do, we are working with transportation and our own staff, trying to get folks completely through the process to be able to drive the type As. We only, we got the one in, in March, I believe, or April. But those are really, like, they're going to be great as sports-wise, for golf, maybe, tennis, those smaller team sizes, they'll be great for that. And, and so that's one of their uses. But for the scale of what we're talking about with these teams, it, it, they won't, that size bus won't accommodate the whole team, and much less multiple ones needing to move at the same time.
So we, we do have a bus available, we just don't have a driver, or?
That's always the case. There are plenty of the larger buses.
So, I mean, how do we, because we, I mean, we can't hold this up just because we don't have a driver, so.
I think that's why, when I was talking with Mr. Jones, and he sort of did, like, on football in particular, because that's the one that's really going to take the largest bus capacity. It's why there's a Plan A and a Plan B. But we do, it's not like we don't see this coming, and we are continuing to work with transportation. They're continuing to run the ads, trying to recruit drivers, and, and we'll just continue. We're continuously trying to get more drivers, not only to eliminate the last of the regular school day bus waitlists for those who desire bus service and haven't gotten on yet, but also to be able to run these programs the way we want to with the best possible facility options that we have. So it's, it's key, and we know it's there, and we just want to put it out there that, that right now, in this moment, transportation's saying they wouldn't quite have. If fall was right now in this moment, they would struggle to bring those additional activity buses online to transport all the football program in particular. But we know this, and we're, we need to, you know, do everything we can, working with our city partners to avoid this issue. And working with Mr. Jones, there are a number of folks in the athletics programs that, and even fine arts for that matter, because they depend on these buses for these after-school activities. There are a number of folks who have expressed interest. It's just a really hard time for the staff to get through the process right now. So we'll make a big push going into summer, and hopefully, we'll have people ready. Because again, we're seeing that efforts to recruit drivers from the outside, clearly, you know, we're not going as fast as we would hope they would, even with the pay actions that the city has taken.
Yeah, and I think ideally, it would be great if, you know, at least one person, but two, from like the football team, if they want to get the, the CDL, that, you know, we could definitely help to support that. I mean, and even with the type A bus, if that could have just alleviated, we couldn't put the whole football team on the type A, but if it could alleviate the stress, and like Ms. Powell shared, that there, we've had a lot of employees to go through the online module component of the type A, but they've not done the behind-the-wheel component. So we just, if we could get some people to go all the way, it really would eliminate the stress and ensure that our students are able to access those after-school sports.
Are there conversations with the after-school program at Johnson and how they'll be impacted if Beaufort activities have to shift and take over spaces that might be used by those programs now?
So one good thing about Johnson, and it's one of our larger campuses. So there are a lot of options, like the playgrounds and, and green spaces that were the, that even if football ended up there, I don't, I think there's plenty of outdoor space at Johnson for, for the after-school program as well. We did have to alert soccer that they may not be able to use those fields in the fall. We'll have to wait and see.
Ms. Andrew.
Any questions?
Not a question, just a comment that it looks like a lot of work, or a lot of work went into that. So thank you for that. Would you mind while we're talking to, if we could pull up that, that diagram, I guess? You talked about how it shows every student, how they'll be impacted. Can we pull that up while we're talking? It doesn't have to, I was just, if it, because I don't know what people are seeing at home. It might be helpful to see that.
Yeah, it's there, if you just scroll down like two pages.
Yep, there it is, right there.
Right there.
The, I think the chart is very helpful, just to be reassuring, but effectively, students stay where they would expect to be until the building opens. So that's, that's kind of the big picture of that chart.
I just was thinking, like, if you were at home, I don't know what you're saying, that it might be helpful to have that up while we're going over it.
And I can't remember, that one, it's probably bumped down on the Charlottesville City Schools homepage news. But if you go to the Beaufort page, and I think the Walker page, it should be on the, on the tip-top of the page there.
Ms. Morris.
No, thank you.
And Ms. McCabe.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate this. Obviously, you guys have put a great deal of effort into this, and I, I love this middle school agenda that we have. So thank you. And I really do encourage everybody to continue the communication as much as possible. I just cannot emphasize that enough. So I appreciate the work you guys have put in the past three, four weeks, and will continue to do. So thank you.
Mr. Bryant, I have one more. My, my, my brain went blank. And I know we talk about this all the time in our transportation meetings and options or things. But is there any option, I remember when the school year started and we had all the walking, there were a few, I don't know which community partners, but I would see, like, vans where they would transport kids to drop off points. Is there any option for us to have something like that, that you don't need a CDL or a special license for?
Yeah, so if the schools operate a small bus, like the ones we have, you have to get the S endorsement, but on your regular license, which, which saves someone from having to work with the, the CDL. Although they're, the processes are similar, it's a matter of what size vehicle someone's comfortable driving. Our, our partners are still out there. International Neighbors is very much still out there, working with their small bus. They don't carry the same responsibilities that we do when it comes to, you know, licensing and operating their small buses. But I know I see them out, and I believe, I don't know about Abundant Life, they have been a tremendous partner, but I know City of, City of Promise is also still, still rolling with, with their van, I think, or, or small bus, whatever it is that they have. So those partners are still out there, and we remain grateful. I don't know, in the context of this, what we could do, but they're still helping with, with certain students and their families.
Oh, I just meant, like, can we oper, like, can we have, like, sometimes you work at a company, and they're like, oh, we have a company vehicle that can be used. Like, can we have, like, activity vans that if you're a parent volunteer that's helping with the football team, or helping with the volleyball team that you can drive, but you don't have to?
If we own it, and we're sort of directing the operation of it, there's no getting away from the requirements that are incumbent on school division transportation. But, yeah, so that's why we kind of have to leave it with the partners. The best we've been able to do is we have offered some, like, gas mileage-type reimbursements to partners because we recognize what they've been doing, and we appreciate it. But unfortunately, we have not been able to figure out a way to not, like, to, to lessen the, the requirements or the requirements in the minute that we're involved directly. Those are the requirements for, not just the driver training and licensure, but insurances and so forth.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Powell and Mr. Jordan. I don't envy you. Thank you all for your hard work. It's only just begun.
I just think it'd be helpful if you, if we do a bus transportation update before the end of the school year for the fall, or June. I mean, because obviously, it's actually the end of the school year. But it'd be helpful to have an update on the school bus situation.
Well, make sure, let's add that to our rap, board wrap-up. Because we do have, we do have new information with regards, Ms. Powell and I just recently talked about it. So we do have new information with regards to where we stand with the buses, and it's favorable news. So, yeah, thank you. Yes, so next up, we have 10.3, our federal programs. We will have a presentation by Mr. Farrell, Ms. Lewis, and Dr. Jeanne Fouts.
Good evening, Chairman Bryant, members of the board, and Dr. Gurley. As you know, each year, we have to submit a plan to the Virginia Department of Education for our four title programs that we participated in RRLs before. One thing that's a little different this year is that in years past, we've used a consolidated application, where basically, when one application, we addressed Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. This year, Virginia Department of Education has, as we know with teacher licenses, they've experienced some staff shortages. And so we thank very much Ms. Hoover and her, her team for their forbearance in waiting for reimbursements and things to go through for the department. And so we know that it's probably, hopefully, it'll be a lot more effective and efficient to have separate applications. So that's what we're doing this year. And so, so you'll be approving at our June meeting four separate applications rather than the one consolidated application we've done in years past. So just to give you a quick, brief overview about what each of the title programs does. So our Title I Part A grant really provides instructional services for it. And we, there's two different kinds of programs under Title I Part A. There's a school-wide program, and there's a target assistance. Target assistance, this deals with specific students who've been identified. Excuse me, in our school division, we have, currently, we have five school-wide programs, all our elementary schools except for Venable, although again, we're working to get Venable to be put on board for next school year. And so what they do there is, again, it's, it's for students who have been identified as having some kind of economic disadvantage. And we usually measure that through free and reduced lunch in the community eligibility program. And, and then also that they're, they're, that risk for academic failure. So how, the primary way we use our Title I funds is through teacher FTEs, professional learning and structural materials. And then the areas that we address for our students at risk traditionally have been math and reading intervention, and also an emphasis on family engagement, and making sure that families are our true partners in what we do for our programming. So that's Title I Part A, and I will leave the other coordinators to describe the other programs.
Good afternoon, Chairman Bryant, members of the board, and Dr. Gurley. So Title II is used to improve instruction. So the way Charlottesville City uses that money is to reduce class sizes in our elementary schools. There's an emphasis to provide additional support in K through first grade to support those ELL students that are coming in and need additional foundational skills. So we utilize some money to support those classroom settings.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gurley. For Title III, that's our federal funding that's for multilingual learners who are in our ESL program. So we can use that for additional resources, curricular resources, professional development for teachers, both our ESL teachers and then any teacher who serves those students, and then for, also for family engagement.
And the final program, Title IV Part A, is the Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant. Now, this one is probably not as, it's a little bit more of an open category than the other grant programs. And so what, I mean, basically, there's three kind of general things that, that areas are focused for this grant. One is a well-rounded student, safe and healthy student, and then allowing students to use technology to advance their learning. It's been our decision as a school division, which is, we've been very grateful for, that we primarily use these funds to support our efforts in mental wellness and positive school culture. So really emphasizing a lot on social, emotional learning, our partnership with Charisolysis, and the, the work that we're doing, especially with being more attentive with implementing restorative practices. And so this supports instructional materials, staff training, and it's been very, very influential for us to be able to move these different programs forward. If the board members have any questions about any of the programs, we'd, we'd be happy to answer them.
I'll start with you, Ms. McCabe, if you have any questions. Ms. Tulli. Ms. Morrison-Berg.
I'm trying to form my question. I guess what I wanted to know is, with all of the COVID-type funding ending and things like that, and like the free and reduced lunch ending for everyone, is there, are there blind spots that you all think we should be aware of? Like, as we're transitioning back with our funding and, you know, like, the things we've kind of gotten used to that have been helpful under COVID that we won't have anymore, or funding is going away for?
I think these programs have, were, we had in place. I think these programs have, were, we had in place pre-COVID and luckily they're still in place post-COVID. And so, I think we've been very intentional and I know Dr. Gurley and the staff have been very attentive about trying to kind of, you know, make that transition away from the grant funding billion to the local budget. So, I think for these, for this kind of programming here, it is kind of prescribed and how we use it. A lot of those pandemic relief funds were pretty open-ended. And so, for the purpose that we have here, I think, let's continue to use these grants for these purposes. Will again, keep those programs strong and, and I think for as transitioning from the, from the pandemic funds to local funds, that process has been underway for a couple of years now and it ends up a well situated for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Torres? Thank you all, all of your hard work and support.
All right, next we will have the professional learning update. Ms. Ford is not able to be with us, so we will have Dr. Odie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Gurley. I come before you for the last time, I believe this evening, to share our professional learning update. Ms. Ford, Jessica Ford does send her regrets as she's had a death in the family and is heading out of state for the funeral. So, tonight we will talk about the professional learning year in review. Summer professional learning opportunities, looking ahead towards the 23-24 school year, upcoming next steps. And then we'll receive questions if you have any. For our professional learning year and review, Ms. Ford shared earlier this year that we will be focused on ensuring that professional learning provided ongoing opportunities that were intentional, meaningful, sustained and aligned to participants' practice. You can go on to that next slide, please. And had a direct impact on student outcomes. So, next slide. Here you can see some of the job embedded support and feedback that were in place this year. Instructional coaches met monthly with me to build their capacity. They could work together, learn together, so that they could better support teachers. Novice teacher mentoring involved Ms. Ford meeting with mentors and providing professional learning through Canvas. Mentors submitted monthly deliverables such as log sheets showing evidence that they met with novice teachers and what they met about. And we believe in building the capacity of our assistant principal team so that we can have a succession plan or process in place in the event that there's a principal vacancy. Our assistant principals received professional learning on using data to enhance instruction from our very own Carolyn Swift. They learned more about the budget from our very own Renee Hoover. And they learned some great communication practices from our very own Dr. Gurley. These topics were just some of the topics that the assistant principals shared in a survey of what they wanted to learn more about and what they wanted to get better at. Our district professional learning involved providing content, grade level and program-specific professional learning to all of our staff around the division. Next slide, please. We do have summer professional learning opportunities coming up, next slide. And we're funding these opportunities using local and grant funds. You see those listed there. We're, we're using S or Title IV TSI or ATS I funds to cover lots of these summer opportunities. The SREB Conference, Southern Regional Education Board Conference is one that we sent a, a team to last year, I believe it was in Texas. And we heard so many great things from that team of folks about how much they learned and how valuable it was. And so, we're sending a cohort of Buford teachers this year. We're excited to hear about the learning that our Buford team will get regarding school improvement there at SREB. Last year, we also sent teams and staff to avid institutes and we're doing that again this summer with teams from Buford and CHS. We're really excited about Dr. Sean Woodley, working with our Buford and Walker teams on culturally responsive pedagogy and classroom management. He's already been here to meet with Mr. Jordan and Dr. Hastings and Ms. Ford. And he's met with the Buford staff already. He came to a faculty meeting and I heard that they left. That faculty left really excited about the work they were going to be doing with Mr., with Dr. Woodley. So, I, I can't wait for that work to continue in the summer and next year. We will have DIBELS training. Ms. Tadle has arranged for DIBELS training this summer for new reading specialists, special education teachers, ESL teachers, K-8 teachers, administrators and coaches. A very important opportunity there to receive training on screeners and reports to use for VTSS implementation. And lastly there, we have opportunities for our mentors to, to receive training through UVA Mentor VA. Next slide, please. As far as looking ahead, we'll go forward to the next slide. We've already, we've put Ms. Ford to work. She's been working for what's coming in June as well as beyond. So, we've started planning for the 23-24 school year regarding our division professional learning. Ms. Ford has been working hard to plan for our June 15th Leadership Advance for all of our division leaders. She's been planning already for the August 1st, second part of our Leadership Advance. She's been planning the PL Palooza, which is what will happen for our, our, all of our teachers and staff, August 16th and 17th. A full day on the 16th, a little bit of safety on the 17th. She did a call for proposals. So, we're really looking, again, we, we like to build capacity and develop leaders. So, we have the call for proposals out there for all of our staff. If they have a skill and expertise, we want them to be willing to share that knowledge with their peers, their colleagues. So, she's receiving those now. We are also planning for new teacher orientation for the division. For schools, Buford and Walker will have sustained support from Dr. Sean Woodley I mentioned earlier. We have literacy support. Again, Ms. Tadle has arranged for Dr. Kristin Conrady to come to Walker for literacy support. And Doc, Doc, well, I said Kristin Conrady and Christie, Dr. Christie Dubay is coming to Buford to provide some literacy support there. We also will continue with a consultant that we use for math this year at Buford Skip Tyler. He'll continue into next year. And then for specific cohorts, we want to continue to add tools to our instructional coaches, tool belts. We have two trainings planned for them so far. PSYOP, which stands for Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol. They will have this training, it's going to provide coaches the support that they need, the training that they need to support teachers as they work with students who are English learners. But truly, PSYOP is good for all students, all learners. So, we're excited about that. They will have a training called Make It Happen, again, enhancing our instructional coaches' skills. This is with Kim Bailey. So, they can just be able to be the best that they can be for the, the staff, the teachers that they are working with. Several of our teacher leaders have a newcomer training. Dr. Faust has arranged that. So, we're excited about that as we continue to welcome new speakers from other countries. We're, we're excited about our new family members that are coming to learn here in our schools. So, our teachers will have a small cohort, cohort of teachers working to learn more, how to support this wonderful group of students as they learn English here in Charlottesville City Schools. And finally, our mentor teachers will continue with training throughout the year so that they can effectively support their mentee teachers. Next slide, please. For upcoming steps, upcoming next steps, we will continue to plan, of course, and prepare for leadership events. Our Leadership Advance in June and again in August. We'll continue to plan for summer PL opportunities. Ms. Ford and the coordinators will be vetting all of the hundreds, hopefully hundreds of proposals that come in from our teachers so that we can have great learning happening on August 16th at our PL Palooza. And we will be preparing training for mentor teachers and preparing for new teacher orientation. It is certainly a busy time in the world of professional learning here in Charlottesville City Schools. At this time, I will be happy to accept questions.
So, I'm looking to my left. Are there any questions? Board members on my left? Lisa and Torres?
Thank you. I, I do have a couple of questions. So, the, what we have listed as summer opportunities. So, those are just kind of optional if people want to participate in those things. That's correct and they are then paid for?
We've, yes, we've been doing some recruiting to see who at the, like, for instance, at the Buford team. Carolyn Swift and I work really closely with the Buford team for their ATS I meetings as they are federally monitored. And we're getting teachers from Buford, from CHS that want to go and learn more about avid, that want to go for the school improvement. And yes, we are paying them through those grant funds, through the ATS I funds that we have or S or whatever programs we have that are optional. But we might do a little pushing, like, really this, you know, do you really want to do this? This would be great for teaching and learning and helping to enhance our skills. It's not required. We just hope that people will want to go. And we do have lists of, of people who have said, yes, I am going.
Well, and, and I guess I, specific to like DIBELS and again the letters as they relate to assessments that we are using and wanting to use to pull data to show for growth or to, you know, for our gifted program, gifted and talented programs. Again, you know, my concern and how do we ensure that all ideally teachers, you know, have been trained or gone through the training so that they can use those, those tools and especially as we continue to prioritize literacy and we look to our new strategic plan and those goals as they align with literacy. I mean, I just hope that, I mean, I think it's great that we're offering that during the summer. I don't know, I don't know how long DIBELS training, how long that takes. But I would really hope that we can increase the numbers or see robust numbers of people in each school that are going through that training. So, I mean, as a summer opportunity, that's great. I don't know when else, you know, when we can make it happen.
And I know, and Dr. Odie will correct me if I'm wrong. I try to make sure I know everything that's going on. But we did do the DIBELS training dur, throughout the school year. This, she did bring someone in, she meaning Ms. Tadle. Ms. Tadle did bring someone in. So, we're going to continue to do that, but this isn't optional. Because we do have people who will engage in the work during the summer. But most certainly, we'll make sure that we continue to support our adult learners throughout the school year in that, in the same manner.
And I will say that as of yesterday, I think, Ms. Tadle told me we have 34 people who have signed up for Letters Training. So, we continue to grow the numbers there. We are, we have learned that if we find the time, because it, it is, it takes a lot of time to, to do this very important work. So, we're looking at ways to find that time for the staff to do that. And, and so, we're getting more people who are willing to do it because we are taking that extra step to figure out how to make it work within their time.
Yeah, no, and I don't mean to minimize. I mean, they work hard all year long, so I don't mean to minimize or take away from summertime. But I think th, these are important trainings. And as the letters, is that new cohorts, new, new people signing up? Or is that the second year or, you know, the next level of training for, for letters?
I believe these are, these are new cohort members that are signing up. So, that just increases our numbers as we move forward. I know that there was a Letters I, Letters II that we've had. And so, we have had people who have finished both of those and we can just continue. I can find out more about if it's Letters I or Letters II. I believe that Steph Tadle is texting me right now.
That's okay. I mean, I can, yeah, if she's listening, she can, she can send me a quick email.
She's been working really hard. She's been working really hard to ensure that we have, you know, the right things in place as she transitions. So, I, I have appreciated the work that she's done to make it a smooth transition and, and progress in programs for our, for our teachers.
And with regards to like Dr. Odie's time reference, you know, where we saw the low numbers. I mean, that, those were the places where we really had to make sure that we could carve out time for teachers. Because they do, they're doing a lot and not just making the expectation after school. So, like, where, where are the places where we can, where the, we've had conversations with the principal or principals about like, how do we make time for it at those specific locations? And I think that that also will translate to increased numbers in participation.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Did you have a question, Mr. Johnson? Okay. Ms. Morrison-Berg, to my right? Ms. Stu?
I'm just interested in, just at future meetings, maybe our advanced, just really being able to see how this really nice array of offerings connects back to our goals and how, and our outcomes. And so, is the expenditure of all of our resources, time, money, et cetera, are we seeing a return on the investment? And I can say that I heard from my own Buford teacher, very positive reviews of Dr. Woodley's staff. I got a whole dissertation about which quadrant we all fall on and how we need to communicate. So, thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you for that. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Odie. Sounds like August will be a, a wonderful learning experience and teachers are going to be highly engaged and fired up and ready to go.
That's right. PL Palooza, here we come.
Thank you so much.
All right, next we will have Ms. Chuck with our strategic plan update.
Good evening, Mr. Bryant and school board members and Dr. Gurley. I have once again decided to split my time with you for an unexpected update. But I did learn, speaking with Becca Saxon here, something you all know in general. But I learned quite specifically that this is her last school board meeting with us. So, I wanted to invite her to come up so that we could collectively express our appreciation. She will be moving to Connecticut and sharing her expertise and leadership with the Bridgeport Education Association. So, on behalf of the board, I just want to say thank you to Becca.
Thank you all. I mean, this is a chapter of my life that is now being closed. That my son is graduating on, you know, the eighth, I guess it is, and we're moving that weekend and I'm moving up before that. But Charlottesville City Schools is the first place I worked. And so, it has been a part of my life since 1998. Yeah, and, you know, I, it's just, it's a real end to a chapter in my life. My wife will still be here for another six months or so. So, you aren't entirely done with me because I will probably end up coming back to visitor at some point. So, yeah, so you will, you know, I will still be around. But we have done some incredible work in this community and so much of it has been with the school board at the helm. The last number of years here have been really tumultuous. And the school board provided the steady leadership that this community needed. And so, even though not all of you are on the board, you are continuing that legacy that your predecessors set where people know that they can be confident in you all, that you have the kids' best interest in mind, that you are doing things in a thoughtful way with compassion. And I just, I hope that that continues with all of you because this community needs it. This community deserves it and you all have a huge amount of authority and a huge amount of weight in, you know, in your laps. And I, you know, just thank you for not shying away from it. Thank you for creating an environment where my son, who does not fit neatly into any boxes, has been able to find his way. And, you know, I know you have a lot of demands on you and you've done a great job with all of it. So thank you. It's been an honor to have my kid in the schools here and it's been an honor to work with all of you every day.
Thank you. Thank you, Becca, and congratulations.
I'm sorry for slipping that in unexpectedly, but Ms. Saxon is heading off to perhaps another school board meeting. I'm not even sure, but she's heading off, she had a deadline. So I wanted to make sure we had a chance to say goodbye. All right, I will slip over now to my real agenda, which is strategic plan. And I want to just preface it by saying, really what I'm doing is again, giving you your monthly update and giving you sort of a preview of a survey that will be going out to the community tomorrow. So this isn't, I'm going to be showing you a lot of content and it's going to be kind of a speed breeze through, but it's really not. We'll have our board work session once we get additional community feedback. I'm happy to answer questions, but we will have another designated time to discuss any of these ideas. This is just sort of a preview of what we're starting to show more publicly. So again, this is just the big picture of the timeline. You can see we really are marching, marching through towards our July goal. And here's just a review of the schedule of the times when either the steering committee or the leadership team committee has met. And I don't think that even has your previous work session on there, but it's just, it just gives you a vision of where we are. And then this is the content that we're going to start pushing out to the community for feedback. I think for most of these items, the steering committee and the leadership team are feeling pretty good about where we are. And it's time to send that out to the community and see if they agree. So for the portrait of the graduate, again, I'm not going to read all these words, but the four big ideas that we want to equip all of our students with by the time they graduate from our schools, starting, and it doesn't start in high school. It starts in kindergarten or pre-K. But so when they graduate, that they will have the skills to think critically, to communicate effectively, to build community and to plan ambitiously for their future. So again, I'm not going to elaborate on this too much, but this is the feedback that we're going to be seeking from the community. Does this, we're going to be asking the community, does this sound right to you? What are we missing? For the core values, we have set forth relationships, growth, the joy of learning and well-being. And again, there may be things missing on here. One thing that the committee and the executive leadership team decided about these values is they really did want to focus. They didn't want a laundry list of every good thing that we all like. They wanted to focus on what, what, what do we hold most central? The vision and the mission, you'll see a little under construction sign. So I'm not sure these are going to be in the survey for tomorrow because the consultant is going to give us a final thumbs up or thumbs down about whether he's sifting through the feedback from the steering committee even, even as we speak. So he'll give that final decision. But tentatively, we have Charlottesville City Schools is a community of hope and growth where everyone has access to their best future. And that vision, again, that's our aspirational thinking about where we want to be and what we want to become. And then the mission is more about how we're going to get there. It's the day in, day work of who we are and what we do. So we are an interconnected, equity-focused school community that is committed to eliminating barriers and providing the knowledge needed for lifelong learning, effective citizenship and personal fulfillment. So I'll just repeat, those little construction signs mean that those, these are the two that we're not as confident that we've quite got there yet. We keep iterating and getting closer, but we just may not be there yet. Okay, for the big buckets or priorities that we're looking for, at this point, the four priorities we've identified are increase academic achievement, provide a culture of safety, wellness and belonging, support our staff and ensure effective operations. And so tomorrow we'll be asking, are these the four priorities? And to help people better understand what do those priorities mean, we're going to give a few examples of things that, that might fit in each one of those buckets. So for, I won't read through each of these, but for, let's say, I'll start with academic achievement. We would be looking at future readiness. Does each graduate have a plan for the future? Dr. Gurley reminds us, you know, that we think of graduation as the most important day, but in many ways, the day after graduation is the most important day. And we want to equip our students so that on that day after, they know what their plan is. Reducing disparities, we know that's the work ahead of us. And providing rigor, inclusion and relevant learning experiences. So those are tentatively the three big goals within that category. But again, that's just part of what we're doing as we go out to the community. We'll give three examples and we'll say, what's missing? Are these the right three things? Should we add more? Should we take away? And more specifically, do you have specific ideas about how we could make progress, move the needle on reducing disparities? Do you have a great idea you've heard at another school division? Or do you see something that's weak or missing within our own work? So that's, that's, that's the discussion we're having. And as part of this survey that's going out, part of the invitation is, you might want to do the survey and be done. You might want to just skip the survey and go to a focus group. You might want to do both. So that's, that's the work that's in the next week or so. And again, this is just a picture of how we have those four goals and underneath, with those four priorities, underneath them, we have these goals. And then we start building out the key performance indicators. That's what KPIs are, the benchmarks and the very specific strategies that might help us accomplish these goals. So the executive learning ship, leadership team in particular has been assembling these and building this out. And you can, here's just a sneak peek of, you know, the working document. And this is, if you were to zoom in and read it, you'll see it's messy. We're not, we're not there yet. We're working. But this is just a glimpse of, of the spreadsheet in which we've all been sort of collaboratively, collaboratively working. So that's, that's the content that we're going to be putting out for feedback. The executive leadership team will meet again. We've been giving, giving our consultant a couple of hours during our main weekly meetings, most weeks for the spring. So we're meeting again on the, on the eighth and the 15th. And he gives us homework in the meantime and we try to, we try, like a good student, we try to get our homework done. So we'll be refining these goals, strategies and benchmarks, especially in light of what we're hearing from the, the survey and other types of feedback. We'll be starting to discuss, how do we, how do we, how do we launch this? How do we deploy it? The survey will go out tomorrow to students, staff, families, community, folks who we want to hear from, obviously. And you're, we're doing it quickly with these focus groups. We're trying to scoot all this out so that by the time you have your work session, we may not have every focus group completed. We may not have every survey completed. But we'll have hopefully a good, a good consensus of data that can help us when we have your school board workshop on the 20th of May so that we can, we'll know, we'll know the direction we're supposed to move in. And then the steering committee will come back together on the 14th to give it one final review. That, that team has been super helpful throughout this process. So if it needs some final tweaks and edits or, you know, just a last little bit of feedback, they will help us with that. And then we'll, we still need to figure out an approval process in July, whether you all, I know sometimes you have a super short July meeting or, or what, how, how that will work out. But that's, that's where we are. I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'm looking to my left, Mr. Johnson.
Well, you have to forgive me because this is my first time seeing anything like this. I guess my first question to start off is, how do we know after we get the results and we finalize everything with the missions and the goals, how do we know that those missions and goals and everything they were, you know, finalizing are getting put to action after? Because just like you paraphrased Dr. Gurley about how it's not graduation that's most important, it's the day after. When we finish all of this, you know, I think it's very important that we do take our time and make sure that what's finalized is appropriate. But I think even more important is what happens after everything is finalized and we get to that point where we're trying to put this in action. So I guess my question is really, after all of this, because I think we're doing a good job communicating this to, like, so you're putting it out to the students, the teachers, all that. When we get to that point where we're trying to put this in action, how do we communicate this to the parents, the students, the faculty, that the plan is getting put to action and that we're actually going on our word?
That is such a good question. I, I think it's a good question for how we communicate it out. And it's also a good question for how do we hold ourselves accountable? Are we, are we doing what we said we wanted to do? It's great to have a plan that sits on a shelf, but if, if we're not following it, that's a problem. So communicating it out, part of that is just Amanda and me to do the work with social media, with the website, with newsletters to families. We're going to be getting a new communications tool over the summer that will be a real boon, I think, to the, to, and it actually speaks directly to students, not just to our families, for, for those in a, of a, of a, of the, of the grade. I think we're launching that for high school first. But we've, over the years, we've had so many students reach out to Amanda and me saying, how do I get on your email list or whatever it is? So this will take care of that problem. So we'll just, we'll just be, that will be honestly, one of our own accountability measures is are we telling the story of how we're doing this work? And I think you'll probably be seeing regular updates for these, for various components. Maybe not a strategic plan update, but, but the updates that support the strategic plan. I think you'll be seeing those as well. And I think one thing that, if you remember with that last strategic plan, it was launched literally like the day it was supposed to get launched was the day after, the Monday after the neo-Nazi rallies. And so that plan, we were supposed to be using the first, the first step of that plan was building out the accountability measures. But the community, as Becca said, really was in a very different place at that time. So I'm astonished by how much we got done with that last strategic plan, given, given how derailed and how, how much, how much has gone on in the community the past few years. But with this strategic plan, before we even, before you all even vote on it, we will have built out the indicators and measures so that we'll know. And we, part of the work of the consultant is to build out a data dashboard for the website so that folks can see, all right, this is, they're on green for this one, but they're on red for this one. And they're on yellow, but, you know, I don't know if those, that's the color system they'll use. But at a glance, folks will be able to tell as time goes by, are they making progress? Are they doing what they, what they set out to do?
Thank you. Just because, you know, it's one of those things where like, you know, I think we all know that's an important part of our school system and everything like that, but it's getting our community to know that it's just as important as anything else that we talk about in the board meetings. So I, you know, it's not just about this, it's, you know, other things too that happen in the meetings that like people don't really take it serious or maybe, you know, consider as much as other things. So that's a issue that, you know, will have to continue on for years down the road. But like I said, this is one of those things that I hope a lot of people will take advantage of to really, you know, there's more than one way to get your voice across. So I'm hoping that this is a way that, you know, we use our voice to kind of get this, the message across about certain things. But I do appreciate the work that you're doing and your team and everybody like that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Torres? Ms. Morrisonberg?
Just one quick question, the survey or however it's going out, does it go out to students too?
It does. And actually, the very first, the kickoff survey for the, for just giving us initial data, students, I think, made up more than 25% of the respondents for that one. The consultants are still talking about CHS students, honestly. They're, they're, they were super impressed by how many students jumped in on it. And so we usually get that out via Canvas, just on can help us out, I think. But I think Ms. Burke posted on Canvas and I think students, it's, I think it's become a little bit of a thing at CHS that students like to, like to share their opinion about whatever topic we're putting out to the community.
Okay. And the public can access the, like, if, is it just, like, how does it go out? Like, if you're like, oh, I'm listening, how do I participate in the survey?
If you are a member of the school community, you'll get an email tomorrow. And then we'll likely send out a press release tomorrow or on Monday to help folks. And that, that way, media, media will help, help tell the story and help folks know as well.
Okay, because I talked to my, my student and I'm just like, yeah, you can go. You can do this. You can take a survey. When she could take that calendar survey, it was just like, this is the best thing ever. So kids do like to participate. So it's nice to hear that they can.
I am, I'm really glad to hear it. And I, I think it's just super important to, to, we talk about student voice, but these are super simple ways to listen to students. And I have, I'm glad, I hope, I hope more students kind of catch a vision for, that we really do want to hear what they think about it.
Yeah, she lost the, her fight. She wanted that whole week out at Thanksgiving, but it didn't happen. But she, she'll keep taking the surveys. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Morris. Ms. Dooly.
Okay.
And I just have one comment. Will members of the community be able to also access this survey via phone as well? Because maybe.
Absolutely. It's very phone friendly. And, and we will, we'll get it up so that it's bumped under the top of the homepage when the survey goes out so that folks who hear about it on the news or folks who are watching this school board meeting tonight will be able to find it tomorrow.
Okay. And what about others who may not have access to a computer?
Usually what we do is we put a telephone number in there, like for texting, so that if they need assistance and it's, the, the survey itself can be translated to languages. But if you, we usually include a number in there where folks can call or text to get some assistance. So and honestly, I don't mind. A lot of times I, if somebody calls me when we have a survey open, I will sort of upsell them into a conversation about whatever the topic is for the survey, just to get more feedback.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chuck. Last this evening, but certainly not least, is the lady who handles the money, Ms. Hoover with the budget update for 2324.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Bryant and Dr. Gurley and school board members. This evening, I'll be presenting the budget update on our adopted FY 2024 budget. This evening, this presentation will cover the, the state revenues, our health insurance expense and the impact that these two items will have on our FY 24 budget. The General Assembly met on February 25th and they approved HB 1400, which is a substitute budget, better known as a skinny budget, kind of new to all of us, to this process. This budget includes, well, this budget is actually the 2224 Miami budget that was adopted last June. It includes the 5% salary action for teachers and staff. It includes the updated estimated projections on the state sales tax revenue that was made in December by the governor's proposed budget and any amendments that were adopted or approved by the General Assembly on February 25th. On April 7th, VDOE issued a CALP tool. And this CALP tool took into account the correction that they made for the grocery sales tax. The big takeaway from the, the state's skinny budget is our state revenue will be less by $334,659. And the primary reason for this is the miscalculation of the grocery sales tax. The good news to all this is our health insurance renewal came in significantly less than we had anticipated and budgeted for in February. So this savings of $374,000, $374,333 we're going to use to apply to the revenue shortfall. So this slide gives you the overall picture of what the savings from the health insurance was, the loss of the state revenue. And then we're going to reply the remaining to our vacancy savings. The loss of the state revenue is going to require us to do a budget amendment to our adopted budget. And so this slide shows you where we'll be decreasing the $334,659 from our state revenue, which will decrease our overall budget. Our total, when the war comes back in June, will be $106,793,988. Is there any questions?
I'm already looking to my right, Ms. McKeever.
Next month first.
Yes, ma'am. This was just for information only and then action will be next month.
Anyone else on my right? To the left? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is board response, and those reports have been submitted and duly noted. Now we have comments from the community. Ms. Como, do we have anyone? I'll start with the Zoom room. Do we have anyone in the Zoom room? Thank you. Is anyone present in this room willing to come and speak? Okay. Now we have comments from the board. And I will start with Mr. Johnson.
So I did miss most of the meetings. I will apologize for that. I was doing a double duty, had a speech to give in the other room. But, um, as the years winding down, I guess I would just say it's, uh, it's good to see that work is still being made, uh, good progress is being made to not only better the education of the students, but, um, faculty as well, so that we were, you know, growing on both sides of the aisle. It's also good to see that, you know, inside the schools, that we are, um, having a good transition into the later, um, part of the year. We're not seeing as much dysfunction, I would say, as, as usual, as usual years in the past. I think, uh, one thing I will add is, uh, as we do continue to move, um, throughout the months, uh, I think we should look forward to, um, trying to figure out how to better communicate to our, um, families and, um, just community in general, um, about just certain things that's going on within the schools and, um, things that we're voting on and deciding and things like that. Because, you know, we're doing a lot of great things, but one thing, and this has been something I've advocated for since probably my freshman year, my first year on the board, is just better communication. Because I feel like we can always get more, uh, uh, input from families. I feel like we'd always get more input from students. But I think just the number one issue with that is how do we figure out how to make, um, those groups more motivated to participate in certain things? So, you know, I would like to see personally more, um, things happening within our schools, trying to, and we're trying to get our students involved, maybe doing more stuff within the schools, um, to kind of get them more informed of what's going on. I think Canvas is a great tool that we've been using recently to kind of get the message across. But, um, I don't think it hurts to kind of get some more maybe in-person things within the schools, at the high school, at the elementary schools, at the middle school, um, especially at the middle school with the construction and things like that, getting them informed of what they can look forward to the next year or two that they're going to be at the middle school. And at Walker, it says they're going to be the first round coming into this new construction. So, you know, just like I said, the thing I'm advocating for really is just better communication, whether that's phone calls, media, Canvas, in-person things in the school system. So, I mean, I'd be willing to help with that. I don't know how much that means, but, um, I just really hope that it's, like I said, the months goes on, that that's something we continue as we continue to do more growth within the schools, that we're communicating that to, um, families at home.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Torres.
So we need you to stick around another year to come up and, and continue to give us some feedback and some ideas. So you'll have to send those to us. Email them as they pop into your head. Yeah. So thank you for that. No, I just wanted to give a big shout out to all teachers and all staff. So again, for teacher appreciation, golden apple, um, just thanking you all and acknowledging your devotion to students and the time that you, um, invest inside the classroom and outside of the classroom and, and just know that we, we, we see that. And also I just wanted to quickly give a reminder to everybody that the Spring Festival for, um, the Buford Garden is next Friday, May 12th, from 5:00 to 7:30, um, as the normal, fall festival that they had at Buford was rained out. So this is kind of the, the last big hurrah with the garden in the current space. So it's a wonderful opportunity, um, for community to come together and to enjoy and see the work that the students and, um, as they, they have helped, you know, grow, uh, lots of wonderful fruits and vegetables that, that we get to eat right here in the schools and just that what they're learning there. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Cultivate because they've been, um, great at, at many of the schools and throughout the division. And that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Morrisonburg.
I didn't have a comment, but after hearing, um, Ms. Torres's comment, I would also make sure that people are aware that they can see the student art, um, for our Charlottesville City students. You can do an art walk on the downtown mall. And, um, yeah, the kids went down and it's just really nice. And some of it's going to be projected on the code building on Friday on the downtown mall. And then there's also a website, but I'm sure if you go to our school's website, it's there. But it's a really nice time on the downtown mall and the kids' art is amazing. So go and check it out.
Ms. Dooley.
So I'm disappointed that our resident, um, CHS teachers aren't here for our monthly update on cell phones and informing us about cell phones. But I understand that there is a committee that's reforming about cellphone use, um, and I'm really interested in hearing their thoughts and feedback. So, um, in the absence of Ms. Horn's impassioned plea to us about cell phones, it's, it's stuck with me, even in our absence tonight. I'm echoing Ms. Torres, it's unfortunate to me that Teacher Appreciation Week coincides with the start of major testing windows, um, that, um, just, that's a bummer. Um, and, um, so I just, you know, as we're just kind of, I don't know, launching, steam rolling into the final weeks, um, of school and testing is upon us, that we know that what teachers are doing in our buildings is so much more than that. I'm glad that we had the golden apple ceremony last night, um, the end of your performances, uh, the art walk downtown, um, Front Porch Hometown Choir is, I think, at the Ravenna River Festival this weekend. But those are the kinds of events, you know, in these next few weeks that I think really embody what we're after here in Charlottesville City Schools. So to the extent that we all can get out and support those, um, I hope that we can do so.
Thank you, Ms. Dooley. Ms. McKeeva. Okay, Ms. Torres.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Real quick, just regarding Ms. Dooley. So I believe the committee for cell phones, our first meeting is this next Monday. I am on it, yes. So I will definitely make sure that we report back to, to you all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Torres, for the update. Again, want to thank our amazing and loving and compassionate nurses, amazing teachers and administrators and, and staff members and all of our Golden Apple Award recipients. What an amazing, amazing group of people. I also, I have a, a letter here. I'm not sure if everybody got it, but I want, I need to read this. This is really wonderful. It says, "Dear School Board, thank you so much for making our school a better place. We really love the school we go to. Thank you for making informed decisions for all educations or educators. We hope that you keep up the good work. Sincerely, Girls on the Run Cafe," you know, "Girls on the Run After School Program" at Burley Moran Elementary School. Thank you so much, ladies." Now, Dr. Gurley.
All right. I will keep it short. I just want to first start by thanking all of our teachers. Really, for me, every day is teacher appreciation day. We are nothing without our teachers. And so I do, um, want to thank you, um, like Ms. Dooley. I, I hate that it, it is at the beginning of a testing window. And hopefully one day we'll be able to reimagine how we assess our students and we don't have to have this, uh, end of the year, um, thing that we do. There must be a better way. But I thank our teachers for preparing our students. Uh, I also want to thank, um, I really want to publicly thank our K-Tech staff. Ms. Powell and I have been meeting with them every Tuesday, uh, and just, um, is it Tuesdays? Tuesdays, yes. The, the weeks are very long. I apologize. I forgot Ms. Stacker's name for a moment today. Yeah, but we've been meeting every Tuesday, just, um, giving them a, a space and opportunity to ask questions. We've been taking some pastries and some good breakfast goodies in the morning when we go, uh, but just giving them the space to ask any questions. We also, I also want to thank our album oil partners because this week, um, on Tuesday at noon, we had a kickoff event at K-Tech where we got to share with, um, our album oil partners, all the work that's taken place thus far with, um, city school staff and K-Tech staff. And now they are, um, a part of the work as well, as we work to seamlessly transition our students, um, to K-Tech, uh, as we seamlessly transition the ownership, I should say, um, of K-Tech. So I just want to thank, um, thank Dr. Haas and his staff, um, for really rolling up their sleeves and doing this work alongside us. And then, uh, lastly, I just want to say just thank you to our school board and to our staff, uh, because really there's just a lot going on. I think, um, everyone's kind of echoed this already. There's a lot that happens and just making the operation of the school work, um, from our custodial staff to our cafeteria workers, to our nurses, to our families, our students. And so of course I've missed someone, but at the crossing guards, every single person who touches our students, um, are educators in some capacity because they are part of the outcomes for our students. So I just want to thank everyone that touches the lives of our students. And with that, I am done.
And the bus drivers.
And the bus drivers.
Yes.
I forgot someone, but I forgot you all with love.
All right, Ms. Swift, you up?
Speaking of bus drivers, um, so we have a request that we'll bring back next month about, uh, the bus transportation update. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Before we adjourn, just want to remind you that on May 20th, there will be a quarterly event at 8:30 at Walker Elementary School in the cafeteria. June 1st, we'll be meeting again, the Charlottesville City School Board here at 5 o'clock in the Bogota Reeves Media Center. So if this not, is there not, are there any questions or is no further business? I call this meeting adjourned.